I'd like to begin by, we the Greater Shepparton City Council begin today's meeting by acknowledging the traditional owners of the land which now comprises Greater Shepparton. We pay respect to their tribal elders, we celebrate their continuing culture and we acknowledge the memory of their ancestors. Item number two, our privacy notice, this public meeting is being streamed live via our Facebook page and made available for public access on our website along with the official minutes of this meeting. All care is taken to maintain your privacy, however, as a visitor in the public gallery, it is assumed that your consent is given in the event that your image is broadcast to the public. It is also assumed that your consent is given to the use and disclosure of any information that you share at the meeting, including personal or sensitive information to any person who accesses those recordings or minutes. Councillors, do we have any apologies to be noted tonight?
Madam Mayor, I'll move that the apology can councillor Iris Varey be noted in the leave of absence granted.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please councillor Adam? All those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. So do we have any declarations of conflict of interest to declare tonight? Councillors, I need to declare item 7.1, Contract 1922, Design of the Maud Street Mall Precent Redevelopment. Deputy Chair councillor Sutton will take the, sorry, Deputy Mayor councillor Sutton will take the chair of that item. Item number five, the confirmation of the minutes of previous meetings, is any item of the minutes opposed? Would a councillor please like to move confirmation of the minutes?
I'm happy to move, Madam Mayor, that the minutes of the ordinary council meeting here on the 16th of July 2019 are circulated to be confirmed.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please councillor Sutton? All those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Mr Harriet, do we have any questions tonight?
Hello, Madam Mayor, we have two. Both from Mr John Gray, John's in the gallery tonight, welcome John. And the first question is, does council favour the Greater Shepparton Education Plan? And if so, has the Minister for Education been notified of council's support for that plan? And the response is, the mayor wrote to the Minister for Education, the Honourable James Molino, in April 2018, welcoming the Stage One funding of the Shepparton Education Plan, including the Marupna Early Learning Centre, and thanked the government for the funding. The mayor whilst acknowledging the exciting opportunity for education, also requested that adequate provision is made to mitigate any traffic management impacts. The mayor requested traffic management plans be developed in collaboration with council and Regional Roads Victoria, and secondly, that the master plan include an onsite bus interchange. The mayor concluded by advising that the council looked forward to working with the state government on these important issues. Council officers continue to work with the state government agencies in relation to the above and the broader transport network planning for Greater Shepparton as a growing regional city. Council also recognises that significant change, such as the amalgamation of four schools into one, or with that, that there are concerns about how this will all happen. Council encourages any community member with concerns to continue to raise these matters with the new Regional College Executive, who are committed to providing answers as efficiently as possible. Question two, can you please provide the total cost of the shared path illuminated location alternative behind the boat shed at Victoria Park? Okay, I think I got the question right, it's to do with the path at the back of the rowing shed. The total cost of the path and lighting was $46,580. The new path was installed to remove a safety issue and prior to the installation of the works, the shared path ended at the boat ramp parking area and led pedestrians to walk through the parking and vehicle manoeuvring area adjacent to the boat ramp. Breakdown of the costing was approximately $24,500 for the lighting and approximately $22,000 for the civil works. Works have been completed and I've noticed the pedestrians using that path and are now avoiding the congestion at the actual boat ramp and boat facilities down there, so it seems to be working well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, I now ask councillor Sutton to take the chair please for the next item. Item 7.1, there's a recommendation on page two, would a councillor like to move a motion?
I'll move the recommendation on page two, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, definitely.
Thank you, could I have a second please?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chair.
Would you like to speak to the motion, Dennis?
Thank you. Yes, council's been through a long process with community consultation regarding a design. It was put out there, people discussed and put their submissions into which out of the four options we had. And the option we come up with is this one that we're now working on. There's been some discussion in the public, I've seen, about the price of now half a million dollars for planning, but I totally support that. What we've got to do is really make sure we nail the actual tender document itself and get the design right. We don't want to be going down a pathway where we find there's a pipe underneath there that we didn't think was there, that telecom cables need shifting etcetera and we, the end price gets blown out of the water, so we need to do this properly when we do the planning, and that's what this is all about. There's a full costing of the whole development, so hopefully there'll be no surprises at the end of it, and we can come up with the actual drawing exactly where things are, and we can all move ahead and get this sorted out once and for all, hopefully.
Councillor Patterson, councillor Adam?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'd just like to reiterate councillor Patterson's comments, I think this is the best way of moving forward, it's the responsible way of doing things. And as Dennis said, we need to make sure we've got everything in place before we actually take the next step. We don't want surprises, as Dennis mentioned, and hopefully this will ensure that we don't get any surprises.
Any councillor like to speak against the motion? Fern?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm not convinced that this is the best way forward for the mall, as per the objection when the design was voted on. I don't think we've done enough work in the preliminary discussions on what we actually want to achieve. If we'd done a trial and that indicated that car traffic was successful, then I'd be all for pushing ahead, but we've sort of come up with these designs, we've put them out to the public, the public have come back and told us that they prefer not having a road, yet we've sort of put that aside and listened to the squeaky wheel of the retailers who think that a road will improve their sales. We don't have a business case, and without a business case, it's really hard to make any kind of inferences on what is going to happen if we do push ahead with this. We know that retail is struggling, it's struggling all over, and it's kind of reminding me of, oh, but we've got to do something, and I think that that way of thinking could be fraught with risk, because we could lose a beautiful open space. Instead of this knee-jerk decision to put a road through, we've got an opportunity to address all the determinants that can make this space successful. The business case will presumably look at the outcomes we want, whether it's increased foot traffic, improved amenity, more shade, encouraging socialising, healthy environment, or it could even be a worse outcome, and another nail in the coffin for regional retail centres in that area. If it was true that a road improved retail, then Wyndham and High should be thriving right now and they're just not, so that argument to me doesn't make a lot of sense. I just think we should all wait, I'm actually imploring councillors to wait, just until we've seen the business case before we push ahead with any contract. We're not likely to go back if the business case says it's not successful, I don't think we should do it blind, and sometimes doing nothing is better than doing something.
Councillor Summer? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Acting Mayor, close than you. This is a very contentious point, obviously, I'd like to make comment on what councillor Summer said earlier, that a knee-jerk reaction, well I think this has been coming for 20 years, so it's a pretty slow knee-jerk reaction, I think.
Fair enough.
And the reasoning behind why we're approving this tender this evening is, I suppose, primarily to ensure that we can encourage economic development in the mall itself. I don't think there's any doubt that the mall itself is struggling and something needs to be done. Now, we can sit on our hands and do nothing like has been done for 20 years, or we can actually get up and do something. Councillor Summer mentioned the business case, and that's important, obviously, but the business case is part of this tender process, so that will be done, so we will have that information in front of us to ensure that the decision we make is the correct one. Five, it's unusual, there were five tenders for this particular project, one was knocked out because they didn't comply, but the other four all complied with the requirements of the tender, and it's interesting that GSA Pty Ltd have been given the nod, we hope that they are very thorough in the works that they do, and that they come up with a business plan and concept plan for us to consider, because the mall certainly needs it, they're up against a lot of negatives for them in relation to people buying things off the internet, that always makes it extremely hard for shop-based traders, so I think that if we can support them in any way, I think that that's one of the roles that we're here to do.
Councillor Jevanetti, would anybody like to speak against the motion? Anybody like to speak for the motion?
I'd just like to speak for the motion, I just don't agree with Fern saying that it has, you know, we haven't had enough consultation, I think we've had heaps of consultation over the years, so I'm really happy that we're actually getting something done now, and there will be a business case.
Point of clarification, I didn't say we hadn't done consultation, I said that we did not choose the design that the people wanted.
Oh, that's debatable, but anyway.
Statistically proven, we've got votes that say more people wanted no road.
Two more people. But something needs to be done about the mall, and with this tenderer coming along, and he was, he's actually from Melbourne, but he has local content and local people, and I just think that we've, in that, that now that we've got this going, something will happen in the mall at long last, and the traders will be happy, and people will be happy, and I just think it's going to be very good for Shepparton.
Anyone else who wishes to speak? So now we'll go to the vote, all those...
Madam Mayor, can I have a closing comment please?
Oh, sorry.
Because it was spoken against, and councillor Jevanetti replied to a few councillor Summers' issues, no one claimed that this will fix our CBD, that's, I think we're all well and truly aware of that. It might make a difference, but it should be noted that the cities of Bendigo and Ballarat are doing exactly what we're doing, they're going down that path. A business case, I don't know how you can actually conduct a business case in an issue like this, apart from funding etcetera, you certainly won't be able to decide that you're going to have a better turnover in the CBD because of this, this is all what we've got to decide ourselves, which we've done. But the issues of the CBD with Wyndham Street and Fry Street still being, and High Street, sorry, still being, having access from the roads and still not being busy, a lot of that relates to me to heavy traffic going through there, which hopefully can be corrected. So eventually, when several things happen, we will end up with a vibrant CBD, and that's what we're asked, but I can rest assured, no one believes that this is going to fix the whole issue of the CBD. There's lots of more issues there, about constant opening times, about high rents, people moving out from high rents, lots of issues, but this hopefully will be a start to get our CBD back to how it used to be, and I think we all agree on that.
Councillor Patterson? Now we'll go to the vote, all those in favour, against, carried.
It's true, at least we're doing something, because it can change.
Thank you, councillor Sutton. Councillors, we'll now go to item 8.1 on page seven, Contracts Awarded Under Delegation and Contracts Advertised But Yet To Be Awarded. Please note that Contract 1889, Balaklava Road, Burney Road Intersection, Stage One and Two Upway was included in error and will be deleted from the meeting minutes. This contract was awarded by council resolution on the 21st of May 2019. Would a councillor please like to move a motion?
I'm happy to move the motion, ah, sorry, the recommendation, Madam Mayor, on page seven. The council note that tended contracts awarded under delegated authority by the CEO and the contracts awarded under delegated authority by the director, and request for tenders advertised but not yet awarded.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Abdullah? Councillor Jevanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, this is standard practice that we go through every month whereby we provide the community with the opportunity to have a look at the works that are, have been tended and accepted, and works that are currently still under review. It's interesting that the list doesn't seem to diminish that much, so to me it means that we're working at a feverish pace to get all this work done, so it's there for information and for people to note.
Thank you very much, councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just emphasising that, of course, this list shows the transparency in terms of the contracts that are awarded or being awarded by council, so it's a good record for people who want to be aware of the contracts that are being awarded. I'm just looking at some of the tender contracts awarded under delegated authority, or some of them that are advertised but not yet awarded, and it's interesting to see that there's an e-waste centre, e-waste shed related contracts for two resource recovery centres, and just want to point out that it's very important since the ban on e-waste going to landfill is now effective, so I think we are right, we are doing everything in the right direction.
Okay, thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Summer?
Very pleased about 1966 Provision of Playground Strategy Consultant. We have a lot of families in this area and a lot of our playgrounds don't have shade and they're quite old, so it'd be interesting to see if we could come up with a capital works programme to try and upgrade them in a timely way that the public generally would want as a standard, so that's good. There's also 1955 Provision of Services for Creative Director for the Shepparton Art Museum Opening Celebrations. Now, that's obviously a very important night, I understand we've got a lot to prove when it comes to this $50 million project, and it's great that we are planning early to try and get that bang for buck, but I don't really want to see the costs blow out unnecessarily considering what we've already spent, surely much of that can be done in-house, we do have that expertise. I'm not sure how we expect to sustain long-term interest in the gallery if we need to get external people in for the opening, but I do, I do understand that it's an important event and it should position us as an arts capital in regional Victoria.
Thank you very much, would a councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page 11, item 8.2, July 2019 Monthly Financial Report, the recommendation is also on page 11, would a councillor like to move a motion please? Councillor Patterson?
Ah, yes, I'd like the motion on, the recommendation on 11, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'll have a second, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Jevanetti, thank you very much, councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yes, I'm so sure I should be talking on financial figures, I'm having trouble actually identifying the page number, but I have started at broad daylight, you can rest assured everybody, so it's only early in the financial year of course, and we're tracking quite well, there's only 601,000 being spent on a capital budget, we've got a long way to go there, but of course, it is just the start of the financial year, so as we've seen before, this tenders have gone out, and I'm very confident we'll get most of that spent by the end of the year, and that's, as a council, we really do like to keep an eye on our capital budget. The rest of it's all tracking very well, there's a couple of small unfavorable results which are only very negligible, and there's good excuses there, or reasons, not excuses, sorry, they're there and they will average themselves out over the course of the year, but I'd like to invite our financial director, Chris Titzel, to give us a in-depth detailed description of how we're tracking, so he can be held responsible if it all goes wrong.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr Titzel.
Thank you, councillors. At this time of the financial year, there's not a heck of a lot more to add than what councillor Patterson has already said, so just a quick summary though, then I'll add some detail. Councillors, you'd be, we're budgeted to generate an accounting operational surplus of 25.3 million, when you adjust this and look at the underlying operating result, it actually comes back to a deficit of 6.6 million that we're forecast to achieve by year-end. While that's a deficit, it's of little concern, because the deficit is a function of the fact that we received our financial assistance grant from the federal government in the 1819 financial year, and it's money that was allocated as their 1920 allocation or half of it, so we've actually come back to a break-even point when you adjust for that. As councillor Patterson mentioned, there's a couple of unfavorable variances that look at this stage that they're forecasting to flow through right to year-end. We'll spend the next period of time analysing that projection with a view to reducing the materials and services budget forecast to ensure that the budgeted position is achieved, and I think at this time of year, that's quite an achievable thing to be able to do. Our working capital is very healthy at this stage and reflects the fact that we've recognised and started to receive rates income for the year, and also that our current investments are sitting at a quite high level of $50 million, but this is in preparation to fund council's operations for the year and deliver on the 1920 Capital Works Programme, which is currently projected to be 74.5 million. Rates and debt is all within reasonable limits and investments are tracking how we expect them to in terms of returns at this...
Okay, thank you very much, Mr Titzel. Councillor Jevanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
I think councillor Patterson and Mr Titzel have covered it extremely well, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page 13, item 8.3, the sponsorship policy, and the recommendation is also on page 13, would a councillor like to move a motion please? Someone like to move that? Councillor Abdullah?
I would like to move the motion and the recommendation on page 13, that the council adopt the sponsorship policy 37.POL14.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please? Councillor Hazelman? Councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, so this is about the review of our council sponsorship procedure, which has been developed into a policy now, and basically it is giving better sort of guidelines and bringing better transparency to the process of sponsorship, and it is, the policy has been updated to basically to reduce the annual budget allocation from 10,000 to 5,000, and in addition to clarifying some of some other areas, and there are clearer guidelines on how to manage some of the repeated sponsorship requests, and so yeah, so this policy is going to give better clarification about our sponsorship policy.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, look, I think it's interesting, it's rather an unusual process, that we've had a review through the internal audit process and then determined that that was going to provide a far too structured and rigid framework to operate under, and we've moved more towards a policy that'll provide a great deal of flexibility in relation to how these funds can be applied. It would have been impractical, it was part of the overall grants programme, because once or twice a year we'd advertise those, but the sort of requests that come to the mayor and CEO are on an ad hoc nature, and so it wasn't appropriate. What I do think is part of this is, in addition to the flexibility that if we advertise and promote this appropriately, it will provide the level of transparency that's required, and it also provides some clear guidelines as to how repeated requests for sponsorship can be managed in consecutive years, and it also looks at the sponsorship per application, a small increase there, but also the safeguard that applications for sponsorship over and above that $500 will require a council resolution, so checks and balances in the process, and I think it's a pretty good outcome.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item 8.4, Election Caretaker Provisions Policy on page 16, there's also a recommendation on page 16, would a councillor like to move a motion?
I'd like to move that the recommendation as printed on page 16 be laid on the table pending further information.
Do I have a second, eh?
I have a second, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Jevanetti, all those in favour, against, carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item 9.1, Review of Greater Shepparton City Council's Grants Distribution Policy, the recommendation is on page 19, would a councillor like to move a motion please? Someone like to move a motion? Thank you, councillors, I need someone, councillor Patterson, would you like to move?
I'd like to move the recommendation on page 19, please, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, do I have a second, eh? Councillor Summer, councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yes, this is basically come about, we had an internal audit to have a look at how our grants are distributed, and there's a couple of suggestions put forth which we're dealing with now.
Thank you very much, councillor Summer, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yes, like councillor Patterson said, it's just a bit of housekeeping with minor changes, we do give out grants of approximately, almost half a million dollars a year for the community to use as they see fit, and I think that that's a very healthy way of keeping individual community members in touch with the social aspect of the city and allow them to direct some of the initiatives that take place.
Thank you very much. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page 22, item 9.2, Tatchira Park Advisory Group Membership, the recommendation is also on page 22, would a councillor like to move a motion please?
I'm happy to read the motion, Madam Mayor, that it's on, sorry, the recommendation's on page 22, I won't read it out in detail because it's quite explanatory.
Thank you very much, do I have a second please?
I'll second the motion.
Councillor Adam, councillor Jevanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, this is the appointment of the membership group for the Tatchira Park Advisory Group, there's a number of people who've put their names down for this, it's a big concern over there now, Tapp Park, and it needs a good cross-section of the community to be involved. I don't know all of the people on the committee, but I do know that people such as David Quick will probably look after the horse events, Carl Walters will probably support the football club, and councillor Ryan, I'm sure he will support the caravan park. But I congratulate all of those people who have nominated for that committee and have been appointed, and I'd also just like to thank the people who have retired from the committee, being Graeme Drew, Mitchell Fox, Chantelle Langley, Craig Rath, Noel Russell and Mick Taylor, I thank them for their efforts over the past term.
Thank you, councillor Jevanetti. Councillor Adam, would you like to speak to the motion?
Well, I think councillor Jevanetti covered everything, actually.
Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote, all those in favour, against, motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page 26, item 10.1, the Murray Darling Association Report from councillor Patterson, would someone like to move that motion please?
Uh-oh, do that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, do I have a second, eh? Councillor Abdullah, councillor Patterson, would you like to speak to the motion?
Ah, yeah, I will, but I won't go through it, it's a report there, it's been a very busy time, as it should be, it's a very significant issue facing our region, and I was tickled pink today to find out that the minister's actually released a press release, and basically, I accompanied her or she accompanied me with a couple of people down a boat trip down the Gulland to show her the damage to the Gulland River, and we're talking about Minister Lisa Neville, and she was very... she was very defiant in her approach to saying this just can't happen, it's doing too much damage to our river. And to her credit, she's come out today with a press release that has significant implications for this region, both environmentally and financially for our farmers. It will mean, she has closed a couple of loopholes for water that were allowing people on the Murray system to sell water at a dearer price, make a profit then buy Golden water entitlements and therefore a lot of our water is going out of this region. Our river was running extremely high all summer and doing lots of environmental damage. She has corrected that and she's given notice that it'll be continued to be looked at and there'll be, these are temporary measures, there'll be permanent measures coming board. So I don't like being political at a council meeting or any time really, but we're very lucky to have a minister that has stood up here and especially since the party's not rural based, but she has really stood up and what she told me in that boat, she's actually done, which surprises sometimes politicians, change things a little bit, but she's been very defiant and said this can't happen and she's corrected it and I credit her 100%. It's going to make a significant difference to our rural industries and I believe the dairy industry is one that's really on the brink. It will help our dairy industry immensely, I believe, with the price of water. It won't be as attractive to be pushed just by walnut farms etcetera down-strewn, so the price won't be as high. It'll keep some of our producers in our game and the important thing is it's not just the dairy farms itself, it's actually the people that work at the factories that make the butter and process the milk and drive the tankers out and sell produce and our vets etcetera that help look after the farms and the animals on them. So it is very significant what happened today and there's more to come and I'll give credit to minister Lisa Neville, she's done a great job and look forward to more developments to help this region because we are really struggling with our irrigation water.
Thank you very much councillor Patterson. councillor Abdullah, would you like to speak to the motion?
I would, I would like to say thanks to councillor Patterson for providing us with this report. It's really helpful, it's very useful because not everybody is involved to this, in this complex and sensitive issue at the same level. So it's really good to have a councillor who is so passionate and committed to this cause and we do have an easy access to councillor Patterson to find out about any further updates. So thank you so much councillor Patterson.
Thank you very much councillor Abdullah. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the?
To the motion.
To the motion, councillor Summer.
I'd also like to applaud councillor Patterson's efforts in his work in the water sphere. Water isn't traditionally a council issue, but it's an issue that does impact us all and I think a multi-government approach that includes local government could offer a stronger and more united voice when it comes to advocating. That section of the agenda, the report section, you could arguably say it's been underutilised, but it is a good resource to offer information on what we're passionate about and how the work that we do outside of the offices impacts on the work that we do inside the offices. So well done councillor Patterson.
Thank you very much councillor Summer. Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to page 27, item 11, Reports from Special and Advisory Committees, nil received. Item 12, Notice of Motion Amendment or Recision, nil received. Item 13, Documents for Signing and Sealing, nil received. We can turn over now to page 28, item 14.1, Councillor's Community Interaction and Briefing Programme. The recommendation is on page 29. Would a councillor like to move a motion, please?
Happy to move the recommendation, it's printed on page 29 of the agenda.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second please? councillor Sutton. councillor Hazelman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Madam mayor.
councillor Sutton, would you like to speak to the motion?
It's just an interesting summary of events that councillors have attended over the past month, so I just think it's good to have it in there just to show that we do do something.
Couldn't agree more. Would any councillor like to speak against the motion? Would any councillor like to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, we now go to item, it's on that one, sorry. Over the page, on page 30, we have item 15, Urgent Business Not Included on the Agenda, nil received. Item 16, Confidential Management Reports. Item 16.1, we have a recommendation there, Designation of Confidentiality of Information Report and Attachments. Would a councillor please like to move a motion?
Madam mayor, I'm happy to move the recommendation on page 30. I won't read it out because it's reasonably lengthy.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second? Do I have a second please?
Madam mayor, I'll have your second.
councillor Hazelman. councillor Jevanetti, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just briefly, madam mayor, what we're doing with this motion is to ensure that the confidentiality of the design, of the, sorry, confidentiality of the contract 1922, which is the design of the Maud Street Mall, and that is that it remains confidential, a confidential document at council.
Thank you very much councillor Hazelman. Would you like to speak to the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak against the motion? Would any councillor wish to speak to the motion? We will now go to the vote. All those in favour? Against? Motion carried, unopposed. Councillors, that's the end of our meeting tonight. I'd now like to declare the meeting closed and the time is seven minutes past six.